I'm going to turn it over to Nikki and she will do the square again about the newly appointed members and then also existing member.
If I could have all the new members stand up please.
Do you want me to stand with you? Since I'm being read up.
Yes, all the new members and new members. So please raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible if you are opposed by your side or if you have to mean otherwise. It's only by choice.
Yeah, did you fakery?
There's one Bible to go around.
We'll fake it.
Carry on.
I state your first and last name.
I'm Mike Mills.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
and that I will be faithful
And that I will be faithful.
and bear true allegiance
True allegiance.
to the state of North Carolina
To the state of North Carolina.
and to the constitutional powers
And to the constitutional powers.
and authorities
Authorities.
which are
Which are.
or may be established
May be established.
for the government thereof
For the government thereof.
and that I will endeavor
And that I will endeavor
to support
To support.
maintain and defend
Maintain and defend.
the Constitution and laws of said state.
Constitution and laws of said state.
not inconsistent with
Not inconsistent with.
the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
to the best of my knowledge and ability
The best of my knowledge and abilities.
and that I will
And that I will.
well and truly execute
Well and truly execute.
the duties of a board member
The duties of a board member.
while serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission
While serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
for the city of Burlington
For the city of Burlington.
according to the law.
According to the laws.
so help me God if you saw this.
Help me God.
After the meeting, what I'll do, I'll have you to sign the oath of office and then we'll step it and then we'll give you a copy and then we'll also keep a copy of our files. Thank you. Congratulations everybody. So now, at this point, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Beasley?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Spatini?
Here.
Mr. Rayner?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Britton is absent and, and I'm going to update this, uh,
And, and Mr. Sanders. Yes.
Great.
Present. So we do have a quorum.
What constitutes quorum?
Uh, it is at least four members.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, so we certainly have that. At this point, I will, um, ask for an election or the nomination for the chair for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'd like to make a nomination of James Kirkpatrick for chair.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Move the nomination cease.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, sir.
Thanks.
Election for the vice chair?
I'd like to make a nomination of Charles Beasley for vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations? Any opposed? That's, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kirkpatrick.
That's why I need a book. I guess Mr. Black still has it.
I will help you as much as possible tonight.
Well, it's, it's
I'll give you some leeway.
It's, I, I know this, I got that part down. I guess, uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of the, uh, hold on, let me, let me, let me roll back. Got the roll call, termination quorum, looks like it's chair. Approve the minutes August 26th, 2024?
There's an error in the minutes.
Okay.
On the second page, the Noose River is spelled N-O-O-S-E and I believe it should be N-E-U-S-E.
You're correct.
Okay.
Any other changes to the minutes? Can we approve the minutes with that change?
I move the minutes to be approved as amended.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, on the agenda. We've, we've already been through the introduction of staff. You want to hit the familiarization with the discussion of planning zoning, members and duties, or have you already covered that, Jamie?
No, I certainly can't. I apologize that our UDO cameras, um, are not working. I'm going to just be too loud for a second. I'm going to see if I can find the switch. Anything different?
Hmm, nope.
I'll be quick there.
Okay. We'll proceed now. So I'll just say in lieu of the chair that the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are, uh, public meetings are open to the public. They are directed by the chair, so if anyone wants to speak, you will need to, um, make sure that he is acknowledging you. This is a, uh, a body that's legislative, um, in nature, so you'll hear more about that in the presentation. And, um, copies of our agendas are on the city's website. If there's anything else to add, I will
Uh, may I just add a couple things? Go ahead, go ahead.
Please turn your cell phones off or to silent.
And we are, all we do is make a recommendation to city council. We decide nothing. It's just our, we, what, basically, what I've always determined our purpose to be, and it's not in writing anywhere, is that we basically just vet out a lot of the public comments and lots of times we can send things back to have community meetings and go, look, you're going to have a much better chance if you go have a community meeting if you don't have one because the staff does such an outstanding job of going through everything. Their, their, their recommendation is typically spot on. They vet the UDO, they vet the uses, they vet everything, the stormwater. I mean, there, there's just so many different compo, there's so many different things that are looked at. And basically, the, when, when I first got here, I was told this, we are a land use only board. Does it fit? And that's, that's how it was described to me, that we don't need to, oftentimes we get runoff in the weeds with hydrological studies and things that don't apply to land use. And environmental issues that are not our issue. Our issue is land use. So, um, and traffic, but tra, traffic does play a, a factor in it, um, but we're land use only.
Yeah, and I'm going to go through, uh, a, a presentation and we'll provide you with copies of the presentation, um, through, uh, through email and also I can print it out for you if you'd like. Again, I apologize that they're not, not electronic. In any event. So, um, the information that's provided to you, the stuff that is on your table, you'll see a contact list for all the staff members, links to the Unified Development Ordinance, the Consolidated Plan, our zoning map. There's also a YouTube channel, sorry that my background's to you, but there's also a YouTube channel that has all of the board, um, board videos. And you'll also see that there's a lot of information on Unified Development Ordinance, um, as well as sections that are relevant to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the types of applications that you will receive. Uh, there's a, um, a date calendar for our, the rest of our meetings in 2014 and then beginning 2015, we'll establish our new calendar. So I'm going to talk to you, um, very briefly about the rules and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the types of applications, their composition, the rules of procedures. Uh, so you might be asking, what does the Planning and Zoning Commission do? You basically have two different roles and they're a legislative role and I'll explain that. Your first role is to provide recommendations and you're providing recommendations to the city council on different types of applications. You will primarily see zoning applications, um, rezoning applications and text amendments and sometimes you'll see plan development applications, um, and we'll talk a little bit about each of those. In addition, you could make recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments and developers' agreements. So I'm just going to outline in your, in your packet there, there is also the section on Planning and Zoning Commission. There are other powers and duties that you have and I'm not going to read through everything, um, but, but those also, um, give you some idea of other things that you might want to be aware of. Primarily, like I said, um, you're conducting public meetings. These are not public hearings, different from what the city council acts on. A public meeting is, is advertised. Um, there are signs that are put up on the property depending upon the type of application, but you are making a recommendation. A public hearing, which, um, which is different in front of the city council, they're, they're actually asked, be tasked with making the decision on a action. And at any point, just stop me if you have any questions. This next slide.
How's it going?
This next slide provides a snapshot of the city's comprehensive plan, which is called Destination Burlington. Uh, it's like a master plan. Um, it was adopted in 2015. So it's, it's a little, you know, we have to look at, and you are tasked with looking at applications to be consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Oftentimes you're going to see, um, that staff will provide a consistency statement sheet which says, you know, this item is consistent or not with the comprehensive plan. It's your duty to make that call. Um, we also have a zoning map and that will outline, um, the uses that are allowed, the dimensional requirements, all the standards that are set forth for uses and developments to occur within the city. I just want to familiarize yourself with some of the terms that you might hear, um, as well, um, section 10.3 in the UDO, which is having your packet, outlines all the powers and the duties, um, the compositions of the board, the voting, um, a lot of information that is found there. How does the Planning and Zoning, um, Commission process typically work? Typically, staff will receive an inquiry or call from a property owner or an applicant saying, this is what I would like to do with my property. Um, during those initial conversations, will, staff will help to determine which direction they need to go. If they need to go, uh, in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately city council, a pre-application conference meeting, which is informal, it's free of charge, anybody can request these, um, is, is required. So at that point, staff is giving advice and recommendations to, uh, property owners and applicants on, um, what their next steps are, what their requirements may be. And that is all before somebody could even entertain with a, a professional, um, and get information in advance. Included in your packet as well is a summary development table, so that in the UDO, there are lots and lots and lots of different types of applications, the ones that you would be familiar with or, or are required to review. Like I said before, are the comprehensive plan amendments, um, the developers' agreements, plan developments, rezoning requests and text amendments. Those are all required, uh, as part of your roles and responsibilities. In order to initiate an application that would come in front of you, uh, everything is done electronically through links from the city's website. So they would, they would, an applicant or developer will go to the website, request a pre-application conference meeting, apply for permits, anything is done through our website. Your role is a legislative role and that follows the requirements in your packet of, uh, UDO section 2, 3, I, 1. And, um, and you hold your public meetings, um, with respect to 2, 3, I, 2. Notice is required. This is open to the public. Attendees are all afforded the opportunity to speak. So before there's a scheduled meeting date, a packet will be provided to you. You typically send it in an email format with a link to get to our website and that way you can download the packet, you can view it electronically. If you require or prefer hard copies, let us know and we can deliver those to you as well. Included in the packet are typically, um, the agenda for the meeting, the minutes that need to be adopted, um, as well as, uh, our staff notes that outline what the application is, um, the relevant sections of the ordinance, um, and any other relevant information that needs to be heard. At each meeting, you have to establish whether or not there's a quorum. So there was a quorum tonight. No official business can occur without the quorum being present. Uh, a quorum is the majority of the members on the commission that are present, um, but that are, that must be present. You have, um, nine regular, no, excuse me, seven regular members, um, within the city, two alternates for the city. And then you have, um, two ETJ members and one ETJ alternate. The alternates do not vote on a case only unless a regular member is not present. And at, at that point, an alternate can, can take their place. The alternates, excuse me, the ETJ members are appointed by the board of county commissioners. You are, the rest of the members are appointed by, um, city council. So I think I mentioned the chair will direct the flow of the meeting, will prevent, uh, will present the information. The applicant can present, um, information and testimony to help explain their, um, their case more. You would provide a recommendation. And then city council is ultimately determining, determining whether or not their request can be approved. There are other nitty gritty things, such as an application can be, um, uh, revised during the case of the hearing, depending upon the type of provisions. That determines whether it goes back to the Planning and Zoning Commission or, um, whether it can continue on through the city council. There's a record of all of the public meetings. Uh, the city council is the only body that can require the neighborhood meetings. So that is not some, it's something that you can
Suggest.
Suggest, but you can not require, city council could require that. Um, if an application is denied, um, no application proposing the same or similar development on all or parts of the same site shall be submitted within one year after the date of denial. Unless the reviewing authority approves a re, a reduction of the time limit. So you can approve a reduction of the time limit. And similar or same development shall mean, we make this determination and, and but if you're looking at use types being the same, um, so they can't come back with the same exact use type that was denied. And they cannot come back with the exact same building configuration, meaning building height, floor, massing. Something has to change in the development to be considered, um, uh, coming back within that less than one year period. The next slide just shows an example of the staff reports. You have that in your packet for tonight's meeting. Um, you have the aerials, you have all of the maps that we included. Um, if you feel like you have a conflict of interest, there is a section of the UDO that deals with that. Um, and you can let staff know in advance, um, if, if it's during the, if it's during the course of the hearing, let us know either way. But conflict of interest is somebody having a fixed opinion prior to a matter, um, uh, close family or business or other a social relationship. Um, there are different standards and I'm not going to go through each of them, but if you feel like you have a conflict of interest, it's in your due diligence to let staff know. And we will talk to the city attorney's office and go forward with that. Skip through a couple of these slides. So, um, with respect to the types of applications that you hear, there are, um, published notice requirements and also mailed notice requirements and posted notice requirements depending upon the type of application. That is all within the UDO as well. So, um, the types of applications that you would hear, comprehensive plan amendment, I don't think anybody on the commission has been involved with that. Were you here when the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. So you, you were probably part of the overall presentation?
Yes.
So anytime
All that time we chatted.
Yeah. Anytime that there was, um, anytime there's a management to that, that would come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you would make a recommendation or not. Rezoning requests, um, we could spend a whole other hour on rezoning requests, but essentially the city, under our standards, has several d, different types of rezoning requests. Stop me if you're getting confused. Each parcel has a zoning designation. An applicant can request a conventional or general rezoning request. Let's say the property is zoned medium density residential and they want to just change it to high density residential. That is a conventional or general rezoning request. Then there is a, um, limited use rezoning request. Let's use the same example. They're starting to zone medium density residential, they want to do it a high density residential. They don't want to include all of the uses that are allowed under the ordinance in that zoning category. They just pick the ones that they would like the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council to consider. So that's a limited use rezoning. You're going to hear an example of that tonight.
Can I throw something in, right, while you're, while you're on this? Basically what that does is that gives the Planning and Zoning Commission kind of an assurance that if somebody, because there, there might be 14 things that are in the MDR. And if they're willing to take those 14 and narrow them down to four, then you know what's going to go there rather than the entire 14. And the limited use has really been, it is, it, because we used to have to do that on, on conditional rezoning. And then you're really taking a gamble, but the UDO has kind of narrowed that down to where you can do this limited deal. And you kind of know what's going to go there because somebody's committing to do it. And that's the, while I'm, while I've got the floor, you mentioned revisions that we can make. Or like, we, are you willing to narrow this down to two things or four things or whatever that case may be? Conditions like, we, we've set conditions with folks as well. Conditions and revisions are basically the same thing, correct? Somewhat?
Yeah, the only, the only conditions that you impose are on the limited use where the condition is, okay, that's X, Y, and Z use. You cannot impose height restrictions, you cannot impose density limitations, you cannot impose that the rezoning is tied to a site plan. You're basically looking at the uses and whether or not they're consistent with, and, and the rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Or the land use pattern of the area. In some cases, you're going to see that the land use pattern and the zoning around the properties does not match the comprehensive plan and then you'll have to make that decision whether or not what they're requesting sat, is satisfied to.
And then, I mean, we, we can suggest like additional veget, vegetation.
You cannot.
We cannot. I thought we had in the past, or somebody had agreed to it in the past.
Under the old zoning ordinance, where there was conditional rezonings, you could recommend, because you're, you're recommending, you could recommend above and beyond requirements and the applicant would have, have to agree to that.
We don't do that under the new UDO.
Under the new UDO, which is our ordinance that you're guided by, uh, that was adopted in 2019, under the UDO, there is a third type of rezoning request, which is a plan development.
Right.
And that is the most flexible rezoning request where it is, um, open to different land uses, open to different densities, open to different provisions. Provided that the applicant is providing a greater, um, a greater benefit of the request than what the ordinance, oh, requires. So they can go up with landscaping, they can go up with design standards, they can go up, they're providing an enhanced benefit associated with their case. There's some examples, um, that you can want to, we can point you to on, on the website to listen to the YouTube cases dealing with the plan developments. They're in more detail. A lot more detail than what you would see under a, a limited use rezoning or, or general use rezoning. Any questions?
I have one other question. The, the, the city does recommend, when, when an applicant does come in, the city does recommend the community meeting, correct? Is, is that a recommendation done by, by staff?
Staff always recommends it
Okay, that's perfect.
as well. During our pack meetings, we always recommend, it's not required, but we always recommend that somebody, that applicant, um, hold a neighborhood meeting. City council is the only body that can acquire it.
Right, but it just, it, it makes things go so much better.
Yeah. Because the notice requirements for the people who are going to receive the letters are within 300 feet. So, from the parcel lines. So we can provide applicants with that list and then they can, they will, they facilitate their own meetings. We're not there, but it is, um, but it is an option for them. Um, the UDO talks about the plan development option. You can read about that or ask staff for more questions. Um, another type of application that you'll see, um, more frequently than others is a text amendment, the UDO text amendment. And that is where we are, staff is recommending a revision to the text in the Unified Development Ordinance. It's a, considered to be a text amendment. We just had one recently, um, that dealt with watershed protection overlay standards. So that goes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission as a recom, uh, recommendation and then ultimately to city council. I'm almost done, um, with this part. So We, um, we also have a trade, training sessions and learning guides on our website. So make sure to take a look at our online learning section. We have videos, um, we have tutorials and we're always here to help at any point if you have any question whatsoever as part of the process or you're not understanding what the application is. That wraps up my quick presentation. Um, so any, any questions on that? Good?
Everybody good?
All right. I think we're going to turn it over to the application now.
You want me to go to item eight?
Yep.
All right. Item eight, rezoning 24 dash 009. Mr. Matthews Alecki, applicant to present a request to rezone property from medium density residential to high density residential limited use. This property is located at the north side of Garden Road, roughly 600 feet west of the intersection of Garden Road and St. Mark's Church Road, addressed as 3755 Garden Road and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 106997. Uh, you don't have any electronics working, correct?
No.
This is directly in behind the ale house.
Right.
For reference.
Yeah, this property, um, from some Garden Road, um, is currently located in it is currently located in the medium density residential zoning district. It's 0.64 acres in size, okay?
Just historically, we, we rezoned that to M D R a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken. It's been, that, that, that track has come before us before. It's been some time. But it was, I think it was zoned something else and then we moved it to M D R and now they want this piece to go to H D R.
They can-
It was, it was a while, it was a while back.
In any event, I'll just quickly summarize what the applicant is seeking to do. They're here in the audience, um, where you can, you can ask them questions and they can explain their, their proposal as well. The applicant is seeking a rezoning request. Like I said before, this is currently in the medium density residential zoning district. So that has different densities and standards associated with it. Their request is to go to a high density residential zoning district with a limited use. They are only seeking one limited use, which would be single family attached dwellings, otherwise known as townhomes. So of all the 114 uses that are in the allowable use table, they're only seeking one. Just for comparison, and this would be much easier as I had slides present.
I've, I've, I've got it, I've got it right here on my iPad. I'm just going to hand it around just to kind of show the property if, if that helps.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I wanted to get the aerial view and not just the-
It's right here.
Huh? Oh, you've got it, you've got to print it out?
It's in the package.
Do you want to pass that?
I didn't, I didn't see the package. I didn't, oh, they're in here? No, it's not in here.
No, he has a printed copy.
Yeah, you printed the copy. I would pass that picture around. Oh, I've got it right here. There, there it is. If that, if that helps you recognize anything.
I've got a printed copy too, if anyone wants it.
You know what it's in?
Yeah.
The next map that you'll see is the zoning map that shows the property in question related to the other zoning districts around it. And then there's the future land use map that shows what the current future land use designations. Because the applicant is only requesting single family attached, I'm only going to talk about the change in density from which exists today to what is being proposed. So under the current zoning, it's a allowable depth max density, about 4.85 units per acre. And under their proposal, it goes up to nine units per acre. So it's, it's almost doubled. The minimum lot areas, uh, and the lot coverage and all of the different setback requirements are all the same as well as the height. So really, um, the applicant can speak to this more than I can, but really the main difference between what they're requesting and what exists today is the increase in density. This is, um, consistent, the zoning request is consistent with our future land use designation because the future land use designation does call for this area to be traditional residential. It allows for additional infill housing and a variety of housing types. So staff does recommend the rezoning, which you'll also see in the staff report. I will also just add quickly that through the change of rezoning from M D R to H D R, there would be an increase in the buffer requirements. Let's say the, the site is developed, it would have a perimeter buffer, which would be increased where it's applying the M D R or the yellow category of volume. There's no buffer required next to the G B or the C B, the general business or the conditional business.
What would that buffer be?
Uh, the increased, yeah, a type B, which is a 20 foot buffer after place to a 10 foot buffer. I don't have much more to add, answering that question's for me.
I was just going to bring him up and let him explain his deal. Unless, did anybody have questions for, for Jamie on this? Because we can come back to her after we hear from him if we need to or if you want to ask him that.
It's a simple question.
Okay.
Difference in parking limitations, right, between M D R and H D R?
Same. The parking requirements are based upon the use.
Yep.
So the uses will be the same. They're only seeking one use. So any audiences?
Matthews.
Matthew.
Yeah, perfect.
Matthew, I was going to say Matthew, but I didn't.
If you would, you, um, is, 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 is a sheet there, Jamie? For the name and address? Nope, we'll get it later.
We'll get it, I'm ready.
Yeah, no worries, go ahead.
Uh, I've got the copy of the survey, it's available to anybody.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
So, uh, survey shows, uh, the, the lot is a net point six one acres. It's point seven five, but that includes civil roadway that's been dedicated. So it's a point six one net acre size lot. Under M D R, we can currently build a single family attached on the property. And that is the use we're looking to do. She has been able to head the, uh, the L L density is 4.85 per acre, which would yield three units on this parcel. This parcel's got 200 feet of road frontage and enough space to, uh, per the U D O, it could accommodate as many as probably about 15 or 16 units from the land size requirement. So we are asking to go up to H D R, which would give us nine units per acre, which would go from three to six units that could be put on the property. We, we feel it is in line with the, the land use plan. We've already confirmed there's available sewer capacity and have an idea of what we're going to do with driveways and street access. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer them.
Did you hold a community meeting? Did you, did you, did you contact the adjoining members?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We are planning to do that. Once we're through this phase and actually have a site plan that would be presented for review.
And, and as I mentioned before, the commission nor city council can consider the site plan as part of your application.
Oh.
Sign as opposed to letter sent?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, that's, I'll, okay, perfect. Anybody have any questions for, uh, staff or Mr.?
I've got a question. It may, it may be way out of line. I don't know what questions I can ask, but you mentioned access. Can we ask about access? Is that something we can?
You, you can ask, you may, it may be premature in terms of their proposal and you can't man the conditions associated with that, but you can ask questions.
Do I, like a drama permit?
Well, the, is that a public, is that a city?
It's a city maintained.
Okay, is it city street? Okay. I've got my question answered then.
That's your little wax.
No, I see the street.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes, there's a well on the property, what do you?
It would be handed there.
Built?
Any other questions from the commission? Fine for right now, thank you. Well, wait a minute, we're not done yet. Anyone, anyone else here that would like to speak on this project? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. If you would just give us your name and address, please.
Thank you, my name is Kristy Wilson.
Hey, Kristy.
Please, I'm going to finish, please. Is that sufficient?
I think so.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. 3768 C Garden Road. So I, um, I grew up on that property. I actually know, um, a gentleman who used to live on the property in question called the, they used to be my fathers. My mother currently owns the property at 3768 C. She's lived there for over 50 years. It is a small neighborhood. I will say that, um, I don't know if the letter was sent. We did not receive a letter, but I know this is, we saw the sign.
Right, okay.
Actually, but I have to be called to find out about this.
Okay.
My primary concern, other than high density, which is a concern considering our property would pass not only this property, but the property on the corner, which is what I think you were referring to.
I, I made a mistake, right, yeah.
Actually, I was at that zoning meeting in 2016 and stated this same concern.
Right.
We have a dirt road that is private that runs from Garden Road right basically across the street from this property. You would, we would pass the property and then turn left down our road to get to our home, which neighbors Jodez and Park. So we're a neighbor of the city. That road provides direct access to the nature trail at Jodez. So that's my primary concern, other than increased traffic on Garden Road and perhaps a negligence to look left before residents may turn out to go toward St. Mark's Church Road. There are approximately eight houses, seven, eight houses that are beyond this property. But accessing the park easily by walking down the private road is my concern. At the meeting in 2016, I did, you know, raise a point, is there any discussion of a sidewalk on St. Mark's Church Road to access the park?
That's nothing that we have any control of, that's a city decision.
Okay.
Right.
And I understand that, but, you know, I'm just sharing my concern.
Sure.
What I will also say, um, and I've been doing suggestions on how I could potentially move that forward, in that meeting, um, stating that since then, an apartment complex has been built, Hall 4 and Paul and St. Marks. We have seen people walking down our road. This was after I, I, it's an easy access because there is no sidewalk. And there are no crosswalks there at St. Marks and Garden Road. We have seen increased split traffic down our private road to access Jodez. And I've actually, you know, talked to a couple of them and they say that they do live in that Hall 4 on St. Marks. So I just wanted to, to voice that concern. I don't know how we could go about getting a sidewalk on St. Marks. But that's just what I wanted to say, that we have not talked about it as a community. I'm sure neighbors may have other concerns, but that's not primary concern.
This will go, after it leaves us, it will go to city council? Because all we do is make a recommendation. And that would be the time to voice that concern to the city council because I'm assuming that those would be city or apply for state grant or something, however that they would do that to get a sidewalk on St. Marks. And there would be, I'm sure there's a priority list with the city already. And that would, that would be the place to voice that concern or to voice that, um, recommendation.
May I ask a few more questions about?
You're more than welcome to, uh, this project, absolutely.
Okay. I had heard eight townhomes, is that correct?
Uh, six would be the maximum on that, five minutes.
Okay, okay. Is this any sort of special housing, sectioned housing, anything like that? I'm, just a question. Okay. So approximately, what is the cutoff for high density? As far as the number, so that I understand. As far as where does it go from medium to higher?
You mean, it, it, what is the density in each of them?
Yes.
Uh, so medium density is 4.85 dwelling units per acre, which this parcel would be like, I think it was three or 3.95. It was like right in the line. And then, uh, high density is nine per acre for a single family attached.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, you know, I, I am, um, welcome to my new neighbors, is, is it? It is better than apartments, so I'm, you know, happy about that, but my, my primary concern-
It's better than that? Chip, please.
Kristy, could you point out where your place is? And I think I figured, is yours the very back, all the way up against the park? And that's your, yeah, so that's your driveway, yeah.
And the nature trail is right here.
Yeah.
And it runs right down to the house, so, and like I said, folks from this apartment have walked out here because there is no sidewalk, there is no easy way to get to the park. Which, there is a walk across if people are running right here.
Yeah.
If there were just a sidewalk right here, uh, that would be easy access.
Thanks.
And perhaps a selling point. So that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak to the sidewalks comment quickly?
Sure, you can speak to anything you'd like.
There, just, it's probably an FYI for some of the people in the room. There's a potential $60 million bond, that a good chunk of which is earmarked for sidewalks coming up for a vote at city council. I'd advocate for it if you wanted in there.
Thank you.
Perfect, probably already is, maybe, who knows? Any more discussion on this? Any questions, any comments, any concerns from the commission? Staff, you have a recommendation and your recommendation is to approve as it is consistent?
With option number one.
With option number one, which is highlighted in red. No more discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Hit it.
Make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from medium density residential M D R to high density residential limited use H D R L U. The property is located on the north side of Garden Road, roughly 600 feet west of the intersection of Garden Road and St. Mark's Church Road, addressed as 3755 Garden Road and consisting of Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 106997. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan and that the future land use map in section four land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The request is compatible with the land use plan development of this site for residential purposes would be in character with surrounding development in the area and can provide greater opportunities for infill development. This action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area and the proposal is consistent with future land use designation. Any future expansions will be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, though we have a roll call, vote, please.
Sure.
Ms. Lawson?
Chair for Patrick?
Uh, approve.
Vice Chair Beasley?
Approved.
Member Rome?
Approved.
Members Bradicini?
Approved.
Member Mills?
Approved.
And, Miss, Member Rayner?
Approved.
Motion carries, yes, 100%. Seven, yes.
Okay.
What else you got?
This item has been approved.
It's been approved.
It will move forward to the city council. We will let the applicants know when, um, when that date will be.
Perfect, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for showing up as well. Thank you. And push hard for your sidewalk with the city council. Jamie, what else do we have?
I, I forgot to mention, um, to, 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 uh, so, if you don't want-
Thomas, can you take that outside, please, buddy?
Thank you. I forgot to warn you to add as part of the training. So items like this, when they move forward towards development, they will, they will get reviewed to be, um, by staff and by N C D O T and others to be consistent with our unified development ordinance, N C D O T standards.
Deaner, the whole nine yards.
The whole nine yards. So there is a checks and balance after the rezoning, if they decide to go up in accordance with the, with the change density, that's fine. But there will be further review on this kind of application. It's not noticed, it's an administrative review. But I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that because I forgot to mention that. Okay, the last, um, so that is it for items and new business. I do have one other thing that I wanted to present, uh, is not part of this meeting, so it's an optional, if you want to stay, you can, if you want to leave, that's okay too. There were refreshments, did everybody get something?
Hey, when I came on, there was no cookies. I'd like to file a complaint. I never got a cookie, I never got a drink.
That's, how is that possible?
Well, that was back in twenty.
Oh, you mean then, wow.
Evidently, we couldn't afford cookies.
Planning and zoning.
Well, the taxpayers have grown so much since then.
Planning and zoning got extra money.
So, uh, I'm gonna just talk briefly about, um, the, an item that's gonna be on the referendum, just so that you are familiar with it in case you have any questions.
Well, it started working. What'd you do?
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it's working, it just all of a sudden popped up. Time is perfect, we're almost done. It's on you, first glass. You bring Mike Mills on, there's refreshments and glasses. What's, what's the deal?
Well, yeah, I'm doing an inspirational presentation.
Sure, no, we, I'm not gonna do that to her, she'll kill me.
As individuals, they're welcome to plot the bond, um, you know, when they talk to people around town.
Their purview is their purview, now whether they want to supercharge the bond in terms of.
The city can't advertise the bond, but you guys can.
We just did.
Yeah, well.
Gray area.
As long as you're not using city resources.
That was neither for nor against, it was simply.
It's simply the fact that there's a bond. Go ahead, Jamie.
Are you staying? Want to sit down? Sure. Okay, so it's on this slide, you can see it, I'm up there. On the November fifth, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, ba, uh, ballot, there will be a, um, opportunity for voters to vote for or against two independent, um, bond orders. So this is just an educational presentation to inform you on what you might see. The language on the, on the ballot itself is very lengthy and it's, and it's detailed, but it doesn't go into a lot of, um, descriptions. So this is just some information for you to be aware of, okay? Thank you for letting me, uh, speak about this in front of you. So there's the two bonds, you can vote for or against, one, two, or neither. They're broken into two different categories, the recreation and parks bond and the, uh, streets and sidewalk bonds. Like I said, there's gonna be a lot of language on the ballot. This is kind of what it would look like in terms of a sample ballot. So we recognize that that might be difficult to understand, so we're, we're doing an educational, uh, program to just help you be informed.
Brings it down to cost.
Uh, the, you can vote during normal voting and there's also the opportunity to vote for this in early voting, which begins on October seventeenth. So what is it, what is a bond, general obligation bond? This just kind of goes into a summary of what it means to be a general obligation bond. You can kind of compare it to like a mortgage on a property. It's where you're requesting funding, um, and it's paid back over a course of period of time. A lot of, it's, it's a financial tool that different, um, entities use to help borrow significant, um, long-term debt. They are backed by the city. That was one question that came up under another session, who backs them? They're backed by the taxing authority. That is why, and it's global government, and that is why you come to ballot for the citizens to choose. So why not cash and why a G O bond? This just basically says, um, a little bit of what I've just said previously. The general obligation bonds, from what I understand, are the most effective, um, most time effective, the most cost-effective way when global governments want to borrow, uh, money. There was a bond, I believe, previously.
Does it, does it mention in that previous slide, the number of years? I know that it was twenty-three and thirty-four dollars for each, per one hundred thousand in taxes and property tax rate, per, per thirty-four and twenty, per, per hundred thousand dollars in tax rate. I didn't know the length of that, how many years that was? If it said that.
This would be a seven year.
Okay, seven, perfect, alright.
Seven year. But there were, the city has gone through other bonds in the past, I believe. There were four, uh, streets, um, yes, streets.
Two thousand and six.
The city has a, a good borrowing credit rate, uh, which means low interest rates, uh, when they're borrowing. The figures that you're gonna see are the worst-case scenario figures in terms of the bond rate itself. And that's established at the, at the time that the bond is issued. So this slide just breaks down briefly, um, the projects that are included in the bond. Uh, there's the six million dollars that's for a permanent closure for the Mayard Aquatic Center, eleven million for the Paramount expansion and renovations and the rooftop venue. Thirty million dollars, um, for a future Burlington Sportsplex. There's not been any, um, site associated with that that would require additional, um, additional input. But that would be to create a indoor recreation for community members and help to be a catalyst to drive local economy. Um, the transportation bonds or the streets and sidewalk bond, fifteen million will be for resurfacing, streets and parking lots, uh, one point five for sidewalk maintenance and five million for the downtown streetscape. So I'm gonna go into parks and recreation. So this just shows you the, the Mayard, um, Aquatic Center and a little bit in terms of background. The, it's located in City Park. It was built originally in nineteen ninety-six. The pool has had, uh, an air, air inflated bubble and a convertible structure covering since its inception. It has gone through structural failure. The convertible structure was demolished in the early months of, uh, twenty twenty-four and the pool is now serving as, uh, an outdoor facility. The project would accommodate a year-round facility, accommodate seven swim, uh, schools, swim teams that call the Mac its home. And there has been a design firm to design, um, engaged to design a permanent climate-controlled pool and pollution. So if the bond, if this portion of the bond is successful, that will encompass this. The Paramount goes back to, and that's, that's just, um, around the corner from here on Front Street. It dates back to nineteen twenty-eight. That was originally designed as a, um, movie theater. It was never designed, uh, to be a full-stage performance theater. It has been renovated, um, and was renovated, I think, most recently in nineteen ninety-six. The bond would help to support theater upgrades, enhanced lighting, H V A C systems, sound systems, upgraded seating, a right stage addition and indoor backstage crossover. And then in addition to that, this slide shows a rendering of, uh, an expansion to the theater that would have a two-story, multi-purpose cultural arts facility and rooftop venue. That would be part of that. And then the sportsplex is, um, it's, it would be designed to meet indoor recreation use somewhere in the south and western part of Burlington. Most of the indoor recreation facilities are located currently in City Park or east of City Park. And a lot of those centers were completed in the late nineteen seventies. So since that time, as you know, Burlington has grown a lot and, um, this would provide an opportunity to attract, uh, regional and athletic tournaments to bring additional visitors. And then the streets and sidewalk, uh, like I mentioned, it would be, uh, resurfacing. So the city maintains two hundred and fifty-one miles, uh, of streets while the N C D O T only maintains seventy-two miles. So money towards this bond would go to large-scale resurfacing and, um, and, uh, cities are scored, uh, the conditions are scored, um, on the condition basis. So those with the lowest score would be prior, prioritized first. The sidewalks, um, there's over a hundred and ten miles of existing sidewalks and so the allocation would focus on repair, replacement of damaged and deteriorated sidewalks. Help keep, uh, sidewalks safe and accessible. And then in downtown Burlington, um, the money would be used for downtown streetscape. We are already, um, going to be undertaking a massive upgrade, uh, in the downtown, replacing water and sewer lines, that's already funded. So with that work being done, um, the city has added in additional funding to help with streetscape, uh, to make the improvements, um, enhancements more safe and, um, aesthetic and, uh, and to allow for outdoor dining, crosswalk improvements throughout the downtown district. So this kind of summarizes what the projected property tax rate increase would be per a hundred dollars. This would be if, uh, if the bonds were approved. And if all of the sixty million fund millions issued at the highest historic G O bond interest rate, which we, which, which I talked about before, maybe lower than this, but we're just, um, we're just showing the worst-case scenario, so.
Hey, Jamie, can I ask a question? Does the, um, increase, the tax rate of five point seven, does that change based on what you're saying? Like if the interest rate is better because the federal government sets it lower or if the project ends up costing less, does that fluctuate if it's approved?
Yeah, I'm not a financial expert.
No, no.
I can answer the questions to the best that I can, but I can also point it to other people. If some of the money is not spent, it's, it's like, uh, I guess it's like a mortgage rate. You, you apply for a, a larger amount and you may not use all of it. I think from what I understand, when I've asked these questions, we anticipate using all of it if the bonds go forward. And yes, if the interest rate is different or it fluctuates, this would be, um, the percentage would be different, different.
Okay.
This is the worst-case scenario.
Okay.
The highest interest rate. This just kind of summarizes, uh, the timeline, uh, with the early voting and the election day schedule. And I think that's it. There's a lot of information on the city's website, which is BurlingtonN C dot gov slash bond. There are, um, a lot more information. The city is also, if you have, um, or know of anyone who, groups that may be of interest for us to go out and, um, present the same educational information, we're happy to do so.
Thank you for doing that.
That is it.
You good?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn? Oh, and check that. Anybody else have anything that they would like to add or anything they would like to say? Motion to adjourn?
I'll say move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.